I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy is absent today. Councilman Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison, the lead of the invocation, please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for your blessings on this city. God, we ask that you'll continue to keep your hand on our community, our state, and our nation during this pandemic. God, I pray that you'll give wisdom to those who have to make the very important decisions about what the next move is. God, that you'll give wisdom to the scientists and our government leaders. We pray for this council today, that you'll give them wisdom in the decisions they have to make. Thank you for the mayor and his staff. Pray that you'll continue to keep your hand on them. We'll give you the praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have an update from EMA Director, Assistant Director Josh.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Director Gaither and Brianna Cole are on their way back from Baldwin County now. So she has asked that Jerry Ramsey of our staff give this morning's update, and then I'll be available for any questions you might have.
Nice to see everyone today.
Good.
All right. The total number of cases countywide now stands at 3,548. This means an additional 537 cases has been added since last week's numbers were reported to the council. As of right now, there are 45 fatalities have been attributed to the COVID-19 in Edwell County. In the past seven days, there has been an increase in positive cases of 15%. Also, we want to remind everyone about the annual drive-through flu vaccination clinic. The clinic will be held at North Glencoe Baptist Church on Friday, October 2nd, and it will be on a first-come, first-served basis. It will be from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Any questions?
He was talking about it, the seven days up 15%. Do you have any earthly idea what some of the causes might be that's up? Is it sporting events, or is it people just not wearing their mask?
It would be very difficult to be able to speculate on what the cause could be. You know, last week, we had good news, and now this week, I would say, we're cautiously There's a lot of meetings, gatherings, social activities, there's any number of things that could be, you know, to blame for the rise. The best thing that we can do is to be prepared, wear masks, take our social precautions. And, you know, we just have to, as best we can, take it one day at a time. And, you know, the information that we get from the Department of Public Health, you know, we do see that downward trend taking place, and we're going to have potentially several of these spikes that occur that could be due to, like I said, any number of things.
Is there anything, as a city council, we can do to help with this?
Yes, actually, just continue to stress the importance of wearing the masks. Let's be honest, nobody likes them. We don't even like wearing them. But if that's what we have to do to get the numbers down to where they need to be, it's a small inconvenience, and you can't put a price on one person's life. A lot of folks in the community and the state, nationally even, are minimizing the numbers, saying, you know, that those numbers aren't as big as this or that. One life lost is one life too many. So if we have to do the mask, if we have to stress the personal hygiene, we have to stress all of those things, then that's one way that everybody, not just the council and administration, but that's one thing that everybody can stress to their family and friends, is the importance of taking those actions.
I know we're going into some outdoor activities we're going to start having at the Falls, so it'd be safe to say that they need to wear their masks on outside activities up there?
Well, it's going to be the course of least regret, yes, sir. Because, you know, the statistics have shown that based upon the CDC's survey, as well as the contact tracing through the Alabama Department of Public Health, the masks are working. You know, they are a simple barrier to allow the infection an entryway into the body. And, like I say, you know, the risk is probably less outside than it would be inside, but the course of least regret is just to wear it, be socially distanced as best you can. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Okay, we thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Fall, for what you do. Okay. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, the work session, and council meeting that was held September 22nd.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September 18th through the 24th.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. An ordinance rezoning property located at 1036, 1038, and 1042 Springfield Avenue from an R1 one-family resident district to an R2 multifamily district. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The owner requests the rezoning for the purpose of meeting bank requirements to obtain financing needed to make improvements to the property. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Show move.
Second.
Presenting a discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 106 Pinehurst Street in District 1, Marcia Edwards-Hartney, subject to two mortgages under Jerry Salvador that are not satisfied, and both with the exchange bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in June of 2019. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in November. No work has been done. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council? Move to abate?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 2418 Hollis Street in District 2. This is Barbara Cash being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in March of this year. There have been no improvements, so there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk?
I have a question.
Yes.
I know I can see in the picture whether any of these you think, you see, like, that one there looks pretty good from the outside. I know the inside's probably terrible, but it might be. You'll want to. Bob and himself.
Mayor, once we get a resolution on any of these, we do put this case through the process, crux of numbers. We allow up to 20% of the most recent tax appraise value of the property. And if the numbers work, depending on, like you said, the interior, we, at some point, we would need to gain access to the interior to evaluate the work there. But if it falls within the equation set forth, we'll rehab it.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
Our next public hearing is a resolution.
Men and women, we didn't have.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1137 Bretwood Drive in District 3, Lula Rutledge in care of Larry Thorne, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come and give your name and address, please.
My name is Larry Thorne. I live around, presently residing at 1113 Hurst Street. I've just been aware of what I need to do to bring a house up to code, talking to Mr. Brand, and I need at least 30 days, a minimum of 30 days, to make the repairs or whatever to get it up to satisfactory code.
We're looking at the pictures that Mr. Harbison had taken of your house.
Do you actually think you can bring that up in 30 days?
Yes, he told me I need to put some siding on the back and replace the stone door that somebody, it walked off, but anyway, and keep the grass cut. That's pretty much it.
Okay, I didn't see the roof. What did the roof look like? Okay, I'm sorry.
Madam President, I did have a conversation prior to the meeting with Mr. Thorne. This first opportunity we've had to talk. He actually is trying to get this property. He is listed with his aunt, who has passed away, on this property, and so he's had the issues of having to deal with that as far as ownership. I haven't had a chance to talk with Councilman Worthy on this, but I don't think he would object to this. I'm certainly not opposed to giving him the opportunity. We discussed what needed to be done exactly on the outside. There's an addition on the back that he needs to remove, and then just some siding and some window issues. So if someone would make the recommendation to table for 30 days, I'll certainly go along with that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
I recommend we give him additional 30 days to bring it up to code.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 326 South 12th Street in District 5, Brandon A. Andre, subject to the mortgage in favor of Fairway Independent Mortgage Corporation, and Dorothy Sue Moffett being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned house. We filed the case in June of this year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
That's Wilson's district, isn't it?
Yeah. Move to abate. Very familiar.
We don't have to see the pictures, seeing the house. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 2305 Sampson Avenue in District 6, Simple Ball, Dimple Ball, in care of Myra Yates being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? In opposition?
Madam President, this case also involves a burned structure. We filed it in November of last year. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
A filed public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 2420 Hilton Avenue in District 7. This is Beverly K. Beavers and Michael R. Beavers being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, this case also involves a burned structure. We filed it in December of last year. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
There's another house we voted on last week that's right across the street from that. Will they get both of them at the same time?
Sorry.
Last week, we voted on to push one down that's right across the street from this house. They'll get both of them, Public Works, when they do them at the same time?
Yes.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing acceptance of temporary construction easement from Mary Patricia Bramlett, Brian Bramlett, Michael Bramlett, and Bobby Bramlett. This is for the city to complete proposed drainage improvement north of Peachtree Street. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Presenting a discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution accepting permanent drainage easement. This is for a... This is for 20-foot drainage easement on property located at 808 South 15th Street from Mary Patricia Bramlett, Brian Bramlett, Michael Bramlett, and Bobby Bramlett. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our last resolution is accepting permanent drainage easement, and this is for a 20-foot drainage easement on property located at 808 South 15th Street from James Dudley. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. This is a document, a resolution approving the change to an alcoholic beverage license. This is involving the relocation of the rail public house from 210 on the tracks to their new address at 538 Broad Street. They already own both properties and have liquor licenses that are existing at both properties. This will simply change the location from one address to the other. I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Announcement, mayor, stop a few?
Yes, I want to brag on our engineer, Heath Williamson. I went out with him on that big drainage easement deal he did. It's really sort of unbelievable. He got that worked out. It's amazing. It looked about 40 feet deep, it looked like, but he got it handled, and I just appreciate people like that. And we got a lot of them who work for us, who do a good job every day, and they don't get acknowledged for it.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Well, Mayor, he didn't dig any of the holes out there.
No, it was already deep. He got it worked out.
We are, we're very lucky, very lucky to have he. I think he realizes that, but we're very lucky to have him. Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick things. I'd like to thank The Times, The Gaston Times, for running the story. I think it was in today's paper about A.J. Tinker, and I think Councilman Worthy had referenced it last week. But this is a young man with extraordinary vision, and I do want to recognize Councilwoman Tolls for committing to go out and support it, Councilman Back, Councilman Worthy as well, and all of the community partners that went out and supported that young man. It is quite refreshing to see a young person, especially at his age and at his level, go out and commit themselves to some level of community service. Because so often, the narrative is different. Young people are just focused on different things. I can tell you, when I was his age, you know, I would like to think that I was that focused and that dedicated to community service, but the reality is, I wasn't. And so, again, it is very refreshing to see that. And again, the community response was awesome as well. I mean, he, you know, the community came out in droves and supported him. And a lot of the organizations that typically step up when this kind of stuff is happening, they stepped up again. So I do want to say thank you to those folks and continue to recognize them. And just on top of what, on top of that, and in response to that, I want to pledge a personal contribution. So I'm going to say it in the context of this meeting, so I'll have to do it. I want to make a personal contribution of $500 to A.J.'s, to the 100 Black Boys 501 C-3. And I want to challenge the mayor and my other council members to do, to contribute at whatever level you choose to, not necessarily through discretionary monies, but, you know, from a personal level if you can. If we're allowed to contribute using discretionary monies, that number will be much bigger. But for sure, I want to make sure that we're supporting. And I also will pledge to reach out to the Gaston alumni of Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity to make sure that we're supporting his efforts in as much as we can there as well. So, again, thank you so much to the community for supporting that young man, and that's going to make a very notable impression on him going forward, and it's probably going to impact how he looks at community service going forward. First Saturday events and Councilman Worthy's absence, I'll highlight some things that are happening this Saturday from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Carver Square. The key events associated with this particular activity will be census drives. People will be assisted with the whole census process and encouraged to participate. Voter registration will be taking place. There'll be an SOS mobile ID unit there. And again, the whole purpose of that is to make sure that if you are, and I, you know, it's something that we take for granted. So many of us carry an ID and a state-issued driver's license that we don't think that there are people out there who don't have that. But you'd be surprised, there are a lot of people who don't have a state-issued ID. And so when it comes time to do things like vote or actually show up for orientation for a job, they don't have it. And it makes it difficult in the state of Alabama for them to vote. It also makes it difficult for them to get e-verified when they're applying for a job or actually showing up for a job. So, again, that's why the SOS mobile ID unit's important, because it, again, gives them an outlet and an opportunity to get that ID that they need. There's also going to be an attorney there, Kyle Pierce, to talk with people about having their voting rights restored. There's a process for that. Just because you're a convicted felon doesn't mean you have to forfeit your voting rights forever. There's a path to get your voting rights back. So, again, there'll be some discussion about how that can happen for you. There'll be a fitness and healthy lifestyle vendors there. And of course, there'll be some recognition that will take place. Certain groups and individuals will be awarded. Actually, that 100 Black Boys group that we mentioned just a little while ago, along with the Gaston Burners and the Legacy Club and the Wildcats Academy and some other groups are going to be recognized. And, you know, I'll say the best for last, one of the things that we want to make sure we continue to drive, because it's a public event and people are gathering, we want to encourage people to show up and support it, but wear a mask and make sure that you take it upon yourself to social distance. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Worthy, I think I'd like to maybe help to clarify first Saturday. I think there have been some calls for people that are saying, it's not the first Saturday like everybody thinks it's going to be with entertainment. This is where a mobile unit is coming from, Montgomery. This is voter registration. This is censors. This is healthy. So it's not that kind of entertainment where you... So it's not that kind of an entertainment where you've got vendors, you've got music. So that's not the First Saturday, because I think there's some councilmen that are getting some calls. I haven't gotten any call. I don't know if the mayor's got a call, but the mayor said he made an executive decision because this was a mobile unit that was coming from Montgomery to help for voter registration and help for sensors. So, because we're already, as a state, behind in the census count, and so we need to, and I've been a big push for voters' registration. So that's what this event is. It's more of a, what I'm saying, it's a service that's being provided and not entertainment. So don't get it twisted with First Friday. It's information only.
And it's also a follow-up to the September 8th event, I think.
Ladies of Montgomery also brought masks for everybody to register and all that.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say Gina Fleming's Mars, she wrote on her blog this last week that we had a council member that kept clicking his pen, and she was trying to find out who it was. Well, Gina, they took my pen away from him, gave me an old antique pen, so it wasn't me. And I've been looking around all morning to see who the pen clicker might be, and I've narrowed it down to Councilman Beck. He's got two pens there, and I've been watching him here a little bit today, and he kind of puts it in his hand and clicks, and he probably just don't know that he's doing that. Probably just something he does all the time, he didn't know he's doing that. That's the one it is, so maybe I'll get my good pen back next week. We sure are pulling for you to be the assistant to the mayor. All Jason's got to do is give your number to the mayor, and I don't know why he won't do that. You might want to stop tomorrow when you're running, if your squirrels don't get after you, and maybe talk to him. That's all we got.
Unbelievable.
Only thing I can say is, I really would like to meet this lady, Councilman Reed.
I'll introduce you sometime if you want me to. Of course, it's over the internet.
Maybe she could come to council meeting. We could recognize her.
What does she call that? Taking over the mayor's job is a word, triumph or?
Tyrone.
Tyrone, yes. So y'all watch out for Tyrone.
I'm trying to get on the good side, because I don't want to take my Debbie cakes away when I can eat them again.
Well, you don't look like you missed a thing. Anyway, y'all, I want to follow up on what the mayor was talking about, the city workers. We are absolutely blessed in this town with city workers who know their job, and they do their job. It's great. And kudos to the trash picker. I've had problems and problems and problems. It has improved, and just a lot. And I really wanted the kudos to go to Polley Works and thank them for the way that they're doing that. Inspiration or whatever they do, and I don't know, but it's working. I appreciate it.
Councilman Wilson?
I want to also congratulate A.J. Tinker on a successful event over there. That's awesome, man, what you're doing. Congratulations. I was doing community service when I was fifteen, but wasn't voluntary, so good for you. You're doing it on your own accord. There's a lot of fire trucks out there that were a little cleaner while I was a teenager. But anyway, in that same vein, I want to recognize some folks from District Five who have spent, this is just one of countless, countless days and weekends dedicated to the Southern Hills Cemetery. Last week, Charlie Hart, Ms. Cherry Bostick, Reverend John James, Louis Walker, Ken Raines, Jamie Sledge, Bob Pine, Kevin Yates, Carol Wright, Craig Scott, Dwight Cameron, Malcolm Cameron. For those of y'all who aren't familiar with the Southern Hills Cemetery, it's a predominantly African-American cemetery that's located in my district, but they have, the effort that they've undertaken to preserve this cemetery and to bring it back to life is truly commendable. I mean, these are people from all walks of life that have come together, and yester, or just last week, while they were working there, cutting back kudzu, cutting down overbrush and all of this, they actually discovered eight new burial sites with eight new tombstones out there that were unknown, some of them as old as 1870. It's just an awesome project that not very many people in the community know about. So I wanted to give, take my opportunity as a city councilman to shed some light on the work they're doing over there. So thank you for all the people like A.J. and all the people that I just mentioned, and hundreds of other people in this community who work hard every day to try to make it a better place. So thank you, that's all I have.
Madam President, can I say something before this, please? I just got a text that we have been a little bit out. We should be, our Polley Works people, our fire department are now in South Alabama on a rescue mission, and I was past the word that I thought we should talk about that, and I'm sure that you will.
Councilman Beck?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. In picking up where Councilman Reed left off, we do have city employees at the beach where the Hurricane Sally came through. I saw Chief Carroll was with the firemen, and I'm not sure who all from Public Works is there, maybe around a dozen, but thank you to the mayor's office and to the staff for going down there. You can imagine what those full-time police and firemen and Public Works people in those cities are dealing with. I think what our folks have been down there, I know Ron Leek has been down there with some others to do repairs on the first responders' houses. I mean, you have first responders down there that are having to do their job, yet their houses and their homes are damaged. So our employees are helping where they can help. We've taken a lot of equipment down there, and, you know, five, six-hour drive in one way, so we pray for their safety and just thank them for their willingness to go and to kind of get into harm's way to help their fellow man down at, down at the beach. Would also like to note that First Baptist Church will not have any food distribution for the foreseeable future. And I do want to echo our staff that Councilman Reed was talking about. We, as we've, I think everybody's aware, we've, due to Goodyear closing and the COVID, we've had to lay off about 150 part-time staff, and so it's just not business quite as usual. I think the ones that are working are doing all they can do to get things done. So I would just ask that citizens would please maybe show a little patience in your area where things aren't maybe happening quite as quick as you're accustomed to. We're about 150 people short, and it's just difficult to get things happening on a, in a normal process. Echo Councilman Williams' comment about A.J. Tinker and the Hundred Black Boys. I just took an opportunity to drive by. I wanted to meet A.J., and I wanted to thank him for his vision and for his effort, and I was only there for about 10 or 15 minutes, but it was enough to see some really good things. It was great to see the community from all different ages show up and to help and to contribute in all kind of different ways. There were people with grills, people with water and drinks, and the city was there. I saw some city employees helping with paint. There were adults there with pressure washing and just, and, you know, it was great to see the before and after picture. That area looks extremely nice and looks so much better, all because a 10th grader at Gaston City High School saw something that he didn't like, and he stepped up and he made a difference. So my hat is off to A.J. and to all of his friends and the 100 Black Boys and that community for their efforts. I hope that can be duplicated in other parts of the city. I hope other young men and women will see something that they don't like and they want to change it. And I think he, I think A.J. has developed the template for doing that. And I will answer Councilman Cannon's comment. This is a 35-year-old pen, Gina. It's not clickable. It can't be clicked, okay? There's nothing to click. So I am not the clicker. Thank you, Madam President.
What about the other pen you have there?
This is the cap.
Oh, okay. I thought you had two pens. My mistake.
This is the cap, this is the pen. It's kind of an old-fashioned pen. I'm not the clicker. Thank you, though.
You can't click a feather.
Well, I'm still looking, I'm still looking, and there's just three more people up here that has them. So I'll get to the bottom of it before it's over with. I'll keep an eye out for them.
One person that worked very hard this past weekend from the city, and that was David in community service. And we was also excited to see me and helping boys do a good job. But David was there the whole time. He was working hard. He was scraping the wall down, and I told him I don't want to be a killjoy, but eventually, you know, painting made it look good, but eventually the wall will have to come down and be replaced. But still, it made it look good, so it'll be something for the city to replace. Also, I'd like to, I know school has started back, and if you have an opportunity and you want to be a community service, the schools need water, because they've closed up the water fountain. So if you, they shut them off so the kids can't use them. So if you want to donate to schools, you can give them a bottle of water, or not a bottle of water, give them cases of water, because they'll need that. So hopefully, things started off well for them. We will have a special call meeting for grass cutting at 1:30 today. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.